Welcome back to Street Switch Photography. Yes, we've got another one. This one is, one second and I'll try and find out what it is. This is the Police and Crime Commissioner of Leicestershire County Council. And what we're going to be doing is taking a look at what they say. Let's do this.
Street Switch Photography.
And welcome back. Let me just turn this shit down because I've got it on my phone so I can see the live chat. Now, what's happening? Well, we've, I've just been alerted on Facebook to a meeting that's going on over at Leicestershire County Council. And this is Rupert Matthews, the Police and Crime Commissioner, who jumped ship from the Conservatives to Reform, and now he is under scrutiny. So it's quite, yeah, quite interesting. Let's take a look at how the meeting goes. I'm going to be commenting throughout this meeting. Let me know what you think in the comments. And we'll go from there. Let's start.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. One second. Okay, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, officers and members. Welcome to this meeting, the Police and Crime Panel. This meeting is being broadcast live to you, sorry, via the public YouTube, and will be available for viewing on YouTube after the meeting. Please turn your microphone on when speaking and turn it off when you have finished. The fire alarm test is not scheduled for today, so if the alarm does sound, please exit the room, turn right, go through the double doors and follow the stairs down to a fire exit which leads out onto the quadrangle. I've received apologies from councillor Dave, councillor Dania, councillor Mulaney and Sam Mamanza as independent. We have councillor Bray here to-
Councillor Dave.
Dave substituting for councillor Mulaney. So we move straight on to the agenda. So agenda item one is public question time. I have received no questions from the public. Agenda item two is urgent items. I have received no urgent items.
Hello to the three people that have entered the, or that are watching me live.
Agenda item three, declarations of interest in respective items on the agenda. Do any members have-
This version of it is a little bit more exciting.
Any interest they wish to declare? None. Thank you, members.
Please hit the like button and share.
And then question four, questions for the Police and Crime Commissioner relating to recent change in political affiliation. Statement. On the 2nd of May 2024, Mr Rupert Matthews was elected Police and Crime Commissioner for Leicester, Leicestershire and Rutland as a member of the Conservative Party. On the 4th of August 2025, Mr Matthews announced that he had joined Reform UK.
So yeah, what actually happened was, I think personally, and again, this is my opinion, he jumped ship because he knows that Reform are going to get in at the next election. And he knows that basically this job will not be plausible when we have devolution and everything else. So the rumours are that he wants to become mayor of Leicestershire. Okay, then.
The Leicester, Leicestershire and Rutland Police and Crime Panel has invited Mr Matthews to this meeting in order to answer questions relating to this decision.
Because he's a career politician or a career, a career person type thing.
As it appears necessary in order for the panel to carry out its functions. Mr Matthews, do you have any statement that you wish to make? Um. Thank you, Chair. I was not informed that I would be making a statement, so no, I haven't written one. I mean, the facts are in the agenda and it says you're going to, the panel will be asking me questions. I sort of assumed that's what would happen. I haven't come with a prepared statement, no.
Well, there's a confidence start from Rupert Matthews. He's going to press the button on the microphone there to turn it off. Very confident. Let's see what happens. I don't know just how confident he will be after some of these questions are actually given to him. But yeah, I haven't watched any of this yet. I've literally just loaded it up live onto my screen and started waffling on about it.
Thank you, Mr Matthews. Okay, so we're going to open the questions to the panel.
Hit that like button.
All right, Mr Bray. Immediately. Mr Bray.
Yes, thank you. And thank you Rupert for coming and answering questions this afternoon. In January 22, Nigel Farage tweeted, Christian Wakeford defects as an MP from Tory to Labour. If he calls a by-election, then that's fine. If not, he is the dishonourable member for Barry South. Are you going to be the dishonourable Police and Crime Commissioner for Leicestershire?
So in people's opinions, what should have happened is instead of him just jumping ship from the Tories straight to Reform, they should have had some sort of by-election so that they could basically vote for a new Police and Crime Commissioner. Rupert Matthews didn't see fit to actually do that. So what this guy's asking is, is that dishonourable?
Mr Matthews? No, Chair.
No Chair. That's it. He's turned the microphone off. No Chair. With his Inspector Gadget hat. No Chair.
Okay. So, members have been-
I'd say overly confident, wouldn't you?
Uh, given options to, uh, field a set of questions for you, Mr Matthews. So I'm going to start off with Mr Harrison as question one.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chairman. Good afternoon.
Reform councillor at Melton Borough Council.
What prompted your decision to change political allegiance?
Thank you, Chair.
Now bear in mind, this is the Reform councillor. He's not going to be asking him any difficult questions because they want him in Reform. The more people they can get in Reform, the better. And yes, I do scrutinise Reform myself. I voted Reform this time round. Who knows who I'm going to vote next time round? Let's see what Rupert Matthews says.
I think I really got fed up with the inaction of the Conservative Party at a national level, as you would imagine. I have a lot of contacts with the Shadow Home Secretary and other members of the Shadow Ministerial Team. I got very frustrated by the lack of movement on their part. Uh, I thought that the Reform Party were all sort of moving in the right direction, I suppose.
And you're a career politician, a career Police and Crime Commissioner. You're jumping ship.
Yeah, I suppose inaction on the part of the Conservative Shadow Ministerial Team, I think is probably a route to what was going on. So Mr Matthews, Mr Harrison, your microphone. Thank you. I'm going to ask a supplementary straight away on that point. Correct me if I'm wrong, but your term of office as the Police and Crime Commissioner will cease before the likely next general election. And at this moment in time, Reform UK are not in power. So what would you hope to achieve by changing allegiance to a party that's got, I believe, five Members of Parliament?
Now, just because they've got five Members of Parliament, I think that was unfair because basically when Labour got in, they got on him, they've got the manifesto, they had a landslide victory and everything else. But the way it actually works off first past the post, I think is unfair. Now, I think that Reform would have got a lot more in the Houses Commons if it was a lot fairer, but that's done and over with now. Let's carry on.
A little more freedom of action on my part, I suppose. You're quite right, of course, Reform are not a big force in the House of Commons. Uh, but they have been setting the news agenda over the past few months, and I believe they will continue to set the news agenda. And I find myself more-
Stuck for words? Maybe?
I'm probably getting a little more support from them than I was from the National Conservative Party. Thank you.
Well, how about giving the police some support and stop making them so woke in Leicester? Now, there's a thought. I seen a video of DP audits where a lady was stood in town arguing with the Palestinian protesters that were there, and she was arrested and she'd got a child. He never did answer any emails, he never did answer anything else. And there's also questions as to something else that happened, which I haven't done a video on yet, but it's very, very, let's just say, interesting.
Mr Bray.
Yeah, I'm just slightly intrigued by your first answer there, Mr Matthews. You say that you, about the Shadow, the Shadow Home Secretary. The Shadow Home Secretary was the policing minister when you were elected. And you stood on a manifesto on that day when he was, when he was a minister in the government, supporting that government.
So if he was standing on a Conservative manifesto, what manifesto is he standing on now? None? Because-
So what's changed?
Uh, there's been a general election which has significantly changed the political landscape of this country.
So you thought you'd jumped ship to try and keep in a job?
Uh, there has been a great growth in support for the Reform Party and collapse in support for the Conservative Party. Uh, I was hoping that the National Conservative Party might react to that in a more positive and dynamic way than has been the case, but the short answer-
Clearly a career political figure. I'm sorry, but that's what this is. This is perfect evidence of a career political figure, in my opinion.
Uh, to cancel Bray's question is, there was a general election. Thank you, Mr Matthews. Councillor Woodburn?
Thank you, Chair. And so you mentioned that you're moving or changing allegiance due to, uh, now having more freedom of action. Uh, is this to say that you were constrained politically previously? And if you've already put out a manifesto of what you intend to do, how can you do anything differently now?
Thank you, Chair. Um, was I constrained? No, I suppose strictly speaking, I wasn't. Uh, was I getting encouragement, help and support? No, that wasn't happening either. Um, but the councillor has put his finger on a very important point with-
So what were you looking for? A pat on the fucking back? I mean, this is the guy that wants to be the mayor of Leicester, rumoured that he wants to be the mayor. I would not give this bloke a mayorship or anything like that if he was the last person in Leicestershire.
Which is the manifesto on which-
He's going to do fuck all for Leicestershire, literally, because he hasn't really done a lot anyway. Again, my opinion, love it or like it, I don't care.
Which I stood. Uh, and that of course was, in due course, converted into Police and Crime Plan.
And his name's fucking Rupert.
Uh, which was approved by this panel. Uh, and it is my job to implement that Police and Crime Plan to hold the Chief Constable to account for the work he's doing, also the various services that we commission, be it victim support or crime prevention. Uh, and of course, the job of this panel to scrutinise the way in which I do that, so.
Maybe people should pop over to Facebook and have a little look at a little feud you've got going on with the gentleman on there about, um, I think it was something to do with the rear end of a lorry. Go and have a look. Look it up.
It is the Police and Crime Plan which is a foundational document and that is not changing. Okay, thank you, Mr Matthews. Uh, Mr Lloyd?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good afternoon.
His response to that was to send one email and then completely ignore it, hoping it would be swept under the carpet. Well, not everybody has forgotten.
No, Commissioner, good to see you. On the same, uh, question previously, you suggested that the movement by the Tories is not, um, going in the direction that you want it to go. It's strange that this is your second term as-
Now, if something isn't going in the direction you want it to, you try and influence that decision that other people are making to try and make it go in the direction that everybody wants it to. So it's a sort of a joint effort. You can't control the whole ship. Now, if you're a career politician, as soon as you see that ship start sinking, instead of trying to patch the hole that it's sinking from, you jump ship straight to the one that's going to stay above water, which is Reform. Hence, I say he is a career politician. He's only in it for the money. He does not give a fuck about the British people in Leicestershire or anybody else for that matter.
Are you saying that right from the very start, that they, that you were never supported by the Conservative Party because they were in control? And that you say that there's growth with Reform, which you can't argue with that. Do you not then feel it's an opportunity for you, um, it's called self-preservation, thinking that the Conservative Party has been said to be going down, down and down? And but you've decided to jump ship because your chances of being elected are far greater under Reform than the honour of the Conservative.
Now, I can't understand the chain of thought. He must have known this scrutiny was coming. As soon as he jumped ship from the Tories to Reform, he must have known. And he's had plenty of time to prepare for the scrutiny meeting. He must have known this was coming. Maybe he should have investigated it a little bit better, being the Police and Crime Commissioner of Leicestershire. Who knows?
If I may just interject, Mr Matthews, thank you, Mr Lloyd.
You interject all you want, my friend.
I will allow the question and I will allow the answer, but can I remind members, this is about the Police and Crime Commissioner and the delivery of the plan. And I would like members to keep that very front and centre. Um, thank you. But, Mr Matthews?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. It's not so much the Conservative Party since the general election wasn't going in the direction I wanted it to go. I didn't think it was going in any direction at all. They were just marking time and waiting for something to happen. Um, uh, as for any future electoral prospects, I'm sure everyone here is aware that with the local government reorganisation, the position of Police and Crime Commissioner is very likely to be abolished and the powers rolled into that of a strategic mayor.
There you go. Of a strategic mayor. Hence the rumours that he wants to become the mayor.
So there isn't likely to be a PCC election, uh, for me to stand in under whatever banner it might be?
Nice try, mate. Didn't work. Um, yeah, there were rumours going around that he wants to be mayor, so this is probably why he's jumped ship straight to Reform, to hope that this actually goes through and everything else. And then basically that gets rolled into another position and he becomes mayor of Leicestershire. Career politician.
Okay, thank you, Mr Matthews. I'll leave members to interpret that as they-
Hold an election on it, let people vote him out. Let people vote, not just sit there and keep it all to your greedy self.
Wish. Um, councillor Kelvin, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just, just following on with that theme. I mean, you described how you didn't feel supported by, um, your Tory colleagues when you were in the, in the, in the party. Were there any other sort of specific events or particular policies? I mean, you, you talk about, the inaction or lack of movement, but what is it that, um, you're seeing in Reform that you, you weren't getting from your, your Tory colleagues?
Good question.
Think a bit of dynamism, Chair.
The money. A future job. There you go. I can answer that for him before he can answer it.
So can I throw the supplementary then, Mr Matthews? Because this is all about your delivery of the Police and Crime Plan, your plan.
So let's have a list of things he's actually done since he's been Police and Crime Commissioner. All I've seen is him walking around looking like Inspector Fucking Gadget and popping in a couple of shops in there to show his face and then buggering off home with a great big wage packet. That's what I've seen. Over Christmas, we had the highest crime rates in Melton Mowbray that we have had for years. If it wasn't for the locals' communities team and the councillors down at Melton Borough Council and certain individuals in town putting up security cameras, radios, things like that, it'd still be the same. I mean, I don't usually give credit where credit isn't due, but credit was definitely due for the, the way they've actually sorted this out. And I will give credit where credit is due.
How does, I think, I'm still slightly confused, as I'm sure many of my colleagues are, as to why changing your political allegiance when you were elected under a Conservative banner twice? Changing to Reform with five Members of Parliament is going to have any material impact or effect on your Police and Crime Plan which you are responsible for delivering? Thank you, Chair. Um, well, as, as I've said in different for, on different occasions, the change of my political allegiance, really, I don't think is going to affect the day job very much at all. The Police and Crime Plan remains-
So you are just staying in a job. You're just basically wanting to stay in your job to try and become mayor. That's exactly what you are doing. That is not democratic for a start. You need to hold a local election or an election to actually get somebody else voted in as Police and Crime Commissioner, in my opinion. Do it. Instead of sitting there licking your lips with your gold chain round your wrist and your little gold ring on and everything with your Inspector Gadget hat.
It's a Police and Crime Plan. That is what I am committed to implementing. Um, so change your political party.
Shout out to Melton Mafia.
Really affect that at all. Um, and as you will know from your experience of local government, it's how you-
Good night, sweetheart.
pave in office and how you implement your own plan. How you go about choosing to do that, which really impacts on, uh, local outcomes. So no, I, I don't think my change of national political party is going to have a great impact on the plan or the work that I-
What about your dishonesty? Now, I would like to see an honest Police and Crime Commissioner. Turn around and basically say, and this is not going to happen, the reason I've done it is because I was worried I was going to lose my job. I was worried that when Reform get in, I wouldn't have a position and I'd probably be voted out. So what I did was I jumped ship at exactly the right time, hoping nobody had noticed, and hopefully I can become mayor of Leicestershire. I respect people more when they tell the truth as it is. Not some jumped up bullshit, cover up, spin doctor crap that some of these career politicians come out with. Now, people have learnt to look completely through it. They can see right through it like a glass, like a well polished double glazed window.
But do you during the day job at all? Okay, thank you, Mr Matthews. Um, councillor Wise?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'm interested in the, in the idea that it was the lack of support that led you to this change. You were voting-
If you're wondering what I'm laughing at, it's something that, um, Melton Mafia has just put. I'm not going to read it out because I don't want to get demonetised, but if you're live, go and take a look.
In on a particular manifesto which will have been coloured by your-
Hit the like button, Melton Mafia, and keep hitting it.
Conservative values. That led to the Police and Crime Plan, which will have been drawn up with those conservative values in mind. And yet you're now telling us that those values have changed. Therefore, how does your swapping of party allegiance it with the fact you were voted on particular things to put a particular Police and Crime Plan in place?
At this point, I'd like him to turn around and say it doesn't. But will that happen?
Uh, I don't think I am saying that my values have-
Changing the question.
Changed at all, Chair. Uh, I think moving from one right of centre party to another right of centre party.
Now, I've got to give him credit where credit's due. There at least he called Reform right of centre. Right of centre, not far right. So again, credit where credit is due.
Not terribly unusual. Lots of Members of Parliament have done it. Um, I think if I had suddenly announced I was joining the Communist Party, I think one would have to think that my, my personal values had changed, but I don't think my personal values have changed.
When he said Communist Party, did he mean Labour? Oh, that was a sneaky one, Rupee. Whoa, that was a really sneaky, that was proper sneaky. There you go. A sneaky one there by old Rupert.
Changed at all. And certainly the Police and Crime Plan hasn't changed. The way in which I intend to go about implementing it hasn't changed. I'm not expecting that to change at all. Um, so no, I don't think my values have changed. If anything, it's the Conservative Party that has changed, uh, and has sort of become a bit like rabbit in the headlights, I suppose. They took an absolute hammering at the last general election. Um, and I-
Yes, but what's the reason they took a hammering at the last general election? Labour and the Conservatives are done. We know that for a fact. They are done. And Conservatives, I'm sorry, but they're, they've gone down the pan. I used to be a regular Conservative voter. And it's the people in main parliament, not the, not the councillors, the people in main parliament that have completely and utterly messed this up. 100%. Now, Labour are doing an even worse job of it. They are a communist, stasi government and they try and turn around to Trump and say, we've got free speech in this country. No, we haven't. We haven't got anything of what we used to have. What is being taken away from us and being taken away from our children's children is our country, our identity. And what happens if you don't identify of, as, as something? You start to get frustrated. And what happens when you get frustrated? You get angry. And what happens if you get angry? You get violent. And that is what the government want by design. So then they can introduce the little ID cards, they can introduce their police state, their nanny state. The problem with this is people have woken up and they can see what you're doing now.
Don't seem to be doing anything about trying to pull themselves together. If my values are important here-
They're not a pair of fucking curtains, mate.
At all. It is because generally I think that conservative values are the right way forward for this country. They offer the best future for this country. And it's a matter of, um, which political party do I belong to that I think is best placed-
Is best placed for you to keep your job and become mayor, yeah.
To deliver on the values and policies. Not that Reform's got officially got policies at all, so the manifesto's run out.
Now, when, when Reform do get into power, they're going to do one of two things. They are either going to completely and spectacularly fail or they're going to be extremely successful. One or the other. Now, people are aware that when they get into power, they're going to have to make some very, very tough decisions that people are not going to like. Maybe raise taxes, maybe, uh, you know, sort out all these benefits and sort out everything else. But I'm pretty sure and I hope so that they are doing it for the right reasons. Not for a political agenda like Labour have got.
Um, but I don't think my values have changed at all. Like I say, it's not as if I've suddenly joined the-
So you're still Conservative then?
In this party.
So you're a Conservative that's jumped ship to Reform to keep your job. You keep saying it over and over again and you can pick these problems off that we have here.
Okay, listen.
That, that's good. Thank you, Chair. Um, just to, to be clear, it's not about your personal journey or, or lack of it. You know, I'm siding with Mr Bray here. Um, it's about whether or not the public gave you a mandate. Um, you're claiming legitimacy for the voters that you choose to represent and that, that your vision, um, is more important. Are you, are you saying that the voter's mandate belongs to you personally rather than to either party?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I believe the constitutional position in this country uh, is it is the person who is elected, not the political party. And I know that is not the case in other countries, but I believe in this country that is correct. Uh, my own view is that it is the manifesto put in front of the public, which is important. Uh, every leaf-
So how is your manifesto going to change now you have joined Reform? You're no longer Tory. Yet you've said that your beliefs haven't changed.
Lit that I produced at the last general election, had a QR code to go to the manifesto. Every social media post had a link to go to the manifesto, so manifesto on which I stood was very widely publicised.
If you concentrated on actually doing your job, instead of trying to be a career politician, this, maybe Melton and Leicester wouldn't be in such a state. Leicester is, is awful. It's awful.
It was very much my manifesto. Did not include anything sent to me by the National Conservative Party at all. It was a bespoke manifesto for Leicester, Leicestershire and Rutland. Uh, in my opinion, the manifesto on which you stand is a, a politician's contract with the public. And once elected, they are morally obliged to implement that manifesto, uh, that manifesto.
And did you implement that manifesto? That remains to be seen. Now you've jumped ship, are you going to do another manifesto?
Was rewritten to be the Police and Crime Plan, obviously-
Or your contract with the public.
Which is necessary for a different audience. It's been approved by this panel. That's what I'm going to introduce. So I think strictly speaking, the law in this country is that, yes, the mandate belongs to the person, not to the political party. Uh, and I hold personally that it is the manifesto which is important. And as long as the person elected is continuing to implement the manifesto on which they were, they stood, they are fulfilling their contract with the public. Yes.
Thank you, Chair. So as I understand it, the Conservative Party focused on modernising policing with an emphasis on community engagement and crime prevention. But Reform seems to advocate for a stringent enforcement-heavy strategy to deter and address crime. Are you changing from one to the other?
Good question.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, as regards my job as Police and Crime Commissioner for Leicester, Leicestershire and Rutland, it is a commitment to the Police and Crime Plan, which is a foundational document. That has not changed. Uh, I think when I was a member of the Conservative Party, the Conservative National Party-
So you've brought Conservative manifesto over to Reform. So Reform have basically just got a copy of a Conservative manifesto via bespoke, written via Rupert Matthews, Police and Crime Commissioner of Leicestershire, Rutland and Melton Mowbray. How does that work? Call a by-election?
Uh, could say things, they might dis- Uh, could say things, they might disagree with my plan, uh, that they had no force here at all. It was a police and crime plan as approved by this panel. Which is a foundational document which is being implemented. The same applies now that I am a member.
So basically he's just admitted that he did jump ship because the Tories are on the way out. So he is a career politician. I'm going to keep saying it and saying it and saying it.
Uh, of Reform, it is the plan which counts. Uh, other members of Reform can say what they like. Uh, their words have no.
Yeah, but will you care? That's the problem. Will you give a shit what they say? Will you listen to what they say? Will you do what they ask of you? I very much doubt it, even when you're, well, want to become mayor, allegedly.
Force here. They are not the Police and Crime Commissioner for Leicester, Leicestershire and Rutland. Um, I am and it's my plan. So it's um, their, their words have no force here. Thank you, Mr Matthews. Uh, thank you, Liz. Um, I, I, I have to say, Mr Matthews, that kind of contradicts what you said earlier. About the reasons for changing party, as in lack of support from the Conservatives. And now you're saying and reemphasising it's your plan and it's nothing to do with anybody nationally.
So basically a lack of support from himself. I'd love to know how that works.
So I, I, I think you've got.
I can't support myself. Get out the job and call a by-election then, mate. Job done.
A bit of a conflict there with one statement and then the next statement. However, moving on. Um.
I'm not moving on. Call a by-election. If you can't agree with what yourself says, if you stood there or, you know, disagreeing with yourself on something that you've written that was bespoke. From the Conservatives over to Reform.
Mister, where are we? Uh, good. Councillor Butcher.
Thank you. Do you anticipate any shifts in commitments, priorities, resource allocations and community engagement strategies?
Not a result of.
So this is a councillor from Melton Borough Council who sits on the Crimes and Commissions Panel, basically asking some questions to Rupert Matthews.
Of mine, changing parties, no. Uh, as with all the councillors around this table, of course, we wait to see what. Settlement might come from the central government in terms of financial support for the.
His favourite word, financial.
Coming year. Uh, and of course, it's always possible that the central government may issue instructions. Which will impact on the work that I and my office do. Uh, I suppose one recent example would be to do uh, with the XL bully dogs. Uh, where central government introduced new legislation, uh, which has involved. My budget in considerable expense. I think over. Certainly over £100,000, possibly over £200,000. Uh, but the central.
Now, I'm going to say something now. I used to work with dogs. I did for a very long time at the Milton DAC, the Defence Animal Centre. I used to look after them in the kennels. I looked after all types of dog administering medication, taking them for walks. Helping the soldiers with the uh, some of the training stuff like that, you know, just general. Helping with the dogs. I learnt a lot about these dogs. Now, we talk about these XL bullies. A dog is a product of its environment. You can go and get yourself a mally and bring it up correctly. They are very highly strung dogs. You've got to know what you are getting yourself into. That is the breed. That is why they use them. If you're going to go out and get an XL bully, which is a very powerful dog. With a temperament that could potentially be dangerous, you've got to know what you are getting yourself into. Instead of saying that they have to wear a muzzle in public, some people put the wrong type of muzzle in public. You have what you call a box muzzle and a cage muzzle. Some people use these muzzles that makes, so the dog can't open its mouth. A cage muzzle is wider, which you put on the dog's face so the dog can pant and breathe and lose that extra heat. That dogs have to lose through their paws and through the tongue. Basically, the hu, the, the doggy equivalent of sweating. Now. Putting licences on these dogs and putting restrictions on these dogs and everything else shouldn't be the case. It should be on the owners. You will always see the chavvy idiots that walk round town with these dogs thinking that they're big and hard and everything cools and they blame and try and get the dog to be nasty. And then basically say, yeah, it's my dog, I'm big and hard, blah, 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 my name's 50p and all this lot. Until the fucking dog's hanging off their face. Now, it's very easy to teach a dog to bite, very easy. You try teaching the bastard to let go, not quite so easy. Again, a dog is a product of its environment. If we had owners that knew what they was doing with them in the first place, there wouldn't be this problem. So before they're even sold to anybody, there should be checks on the owners.
Government has not given any money towards that. So we're always in the hands of central government. Um, but I'm not anticipating any changes as a result of my changing political party, no.
I believe back in the early seventies and eighties, you used to have, have to have a licence for a particular type of dog, which was a shield. With the dog's name and address on it. You had to have a licence for a GSD, German Shepherd dog and think, type, these types of dog. Believe it or not, the German Shepherd dog is in the top 10 most dangerous dogs. I know that because I've been bitten by one.
Thank you, Mr Matthews. Um, so the next question falls to myself. Um, within your police and crime plan, you commit to working towards increased environmental sustainability of the police estate. And I quote, I will ensure that Leicestershire.
Just got Milton Mafia here agreeing with what I said and I know my stuff when it comes to dogs. So, you know, people can disagree and people will have a different opinion of that, but again. Most dogs, obviously they, they all have different temperaments. It doesn't matter what breed you get most of the time, but they will have certain characteristics. Certain triggers, certain aspects of the way that the bloodline of that dog was. If you've got a bunch of aggressive dogs that have had puppies and then all them dogs are aggressive and then they go and have puppies and blah, blah, blah. You're going to more than likely end up with a fucking aggressive dog. It stands to reason, it should be common sense. Again. It needs to be the owner of the dog that is checked. And I think probably checked every year.
Police has an estate that is fit for purpose now and into the future. I will ensure that we are working towards.
I'm sorry, it just pisses me off when I see these dogs that you see walking round town. On a bloody great big chain that's, you can tell it's not a safe dog. And they have it muzzled up and they're there walking it round, you know. Arms like this, like they've got two barrels under their arms with a brat on backwards going in it lad and all this sort of shit. And they haven't got a fucking clue what they are doing with these dogs. And it's cruel to the animal.
Increased environmental sustainability and that we increase opportunities for public engagement. You are aligned with a party that does not agree with net zero. Um, I am very.
I don't agree with net zero. It's bullshit. We need nuclear power stations. We need to start drilling. Until we get the nuclear power stations. That's what we need to do.
familiar with a recent statement.
Is that going to happen under Labour?
Net stupid zero. Um, I find it quite astonishing that you're aligning with a party that is completely contrary. To your commitment within your, your police and crime plan. So are you still committed?
To be fair to Rupert Matthews, what has net zero got to do with police and crime commissioner? I think that's an irrelevant question.
To delivering the sustainability that we've long talked about within this panel. Um, or are you going to change your plan to um, align with your new national leadership? Thank you, Chair. As I've already said, the words of other members of Reform have no force here at all. I'm the Police and Crime. Uh, Commissioner, uh, this is the Police and Crime Plan. Uh, just as I, I would imagine um, other members of the Labour Party or Conservative Party from other parts of the country might say things. Uh, with which people around this table would disagree and. Words from elsewhere don't have any force there. Um, words from elsewhere have no force. I'm the Police and Crime Commissioner. I hold the job. I'm responsible and the plan is the plan that I'm putting forwards for your interest, Chair.
For net zero, where do we get our gas and electric from at the moment? The extra gas and electric that we need? Why is a gas and electric bill so goddamn high in this country? The highest it's ever been. And they're still going for what they call stupid zero. It'd be nice to hear Rupert Matthews actually say he does align with Reform with their stupid zero plan.
Um, we are about to embark on a review of the estate strategy. Uh, because the time has come for.
But is that the Help the Putin party?
Just to do that.
Thank you, Milton Mafia.
Sustainability will play a role in that, so will police visibility, so will public access. Uh, so will a whole range of other things, um, which might include the cost to the police force of various buildings and. Uh, other aspects of the estate.
All we want the police to do is to police the streets of our cities and our towns and our local neighbourhoods. For the simple reason being, some police are going onto line, looking on things like Facebook, X and other social medias. And visiting people's houses because somebody's put hurty fucking words. When they should be out catching rapists, burglars, murderers and paedophiles. That's what they should be doing. Not sitting at a desk surfing Facebook, looking for the next person. That turns around and calls somebody a silly little name because sticks and stones and offences something taken, not something given. So where does he stand on that?
So it's going to be quite a wide ranging review. Um, will probably take quite some time to deal with. Uh, but obviously, yes, sustainability will be a part of that review as is stated in the plan. So is that still a commitment to decarbonise the police estate, Mr Matthews?
I'm just going to fetch a bottle of vape juice because my tank is nearly out. I'll keep playing the video.
I don't think I've ever given a commitment to net zero. I've given a commitment to sustainability. I've given a commitment. Um. To reduce costs, uh, and of course, energy insulation and energy savings will play a part in that. Unless somebody here knows different, I don't think I've ever given a commitment to net zero. Um, of course, all public politi, bodies are obliged by central government to have a sustainability strategy. Um, which we're also working on, uh, though again, that would take a little bit of time to grind its way through the system. So am I committed to sustainability? Yes. Am I committed to net zero irrespective of its impact on other parts of my responsibility? Such as police visibility, police effectiveness and so on. No, I'm not. Thank you, Mr Matthews. And Mr Lloyd, forgive me, you did have your hand up earlier. Do you still wish a question to? Okay, thank you, Mr Lloyd. Mr Bray.
Yes, thank you. It, it, coming back to your previous comment about reviewing the estate, will you be doing this yourself or will you be bringing in the Reform Doge team?
Why doesn't he do a bespoke?
Thank you, Chair. Um.
The Doge team would be quite interesting, but I believe that Reform. Have actually been asking for extra, extra funding over at Le, Leicestershire County Council. So is Doge really working? Who knows?
My office will be working on it, so will the Chief Constable's office. Uh, I have not invited the Reform National Party to play any role in it. I'm not intending to either.
And thank you, Mr David.
Thanks, Chair. Um. I'm just going to paraphrase your thoughts here. I'm just trying to assume that. You're not aligned politically because you've said that Reform have no impact on your policies and procedures. The Tories were a loss to you. So why did you not align yourself to your independence as an independent police crime commissioner? Um, as a.
That's a pretty good question. An independent crime and police commissioner.
Supposed to be linked to a party of Reform that you're saying has got nothing to do with me whatsoever in terms of my planning. So my question is, why did you not remain as an independent? And secondly, is this some kind of a long term plan for you to be with Reform for the future? So is your commitment to the Police Crime Commissioners position?
And then jump ship from Reform to?
Uh, complete or is there's another plan in place?
Okay, um, Mr Edward, this is about the police, delivery of the police and crime plan. And I allow the question, uh, it's up to Mr Matthews whether he wishes to answer. Uh, thank you, Chair. I think I'm going to have to do what a lot of people in public life do, which is to try and draw a distinction between. Myself when I'm doing the job and myself when I'm not doing the job.
Now, the funny thing is that the Police and Crime Commissioner actually jumped ship, yet his deputy police and crime commissioner actually stayed. With the Tories, uh, and she actually put out a statement. So all power to her for, for actually doing that, you know. Charlotte Torrico actually stayed as a Tory. She didn't believe in jumping ship. So she's obviously not a career politician.
So when I'm doing the job of Police and Crime Commissioner, I'm doing the day job, I'm implementing the plan. And so on and so forth. And the noises off are just that, their noise is off, they're not relevant to what I'm doing. Uh, I'm continuing to implement the plan that we've got, that you, you um, have all approved. Um, when it comes to me, the comments made by other members of a political party may.
Might have on staff morale. Given what I just said, is there's lots of different ways you can interpret that Britain as law, as one of them is that you believe the police aren't doing their job or aren't doing a good job. Did you consider how um. Standing in front of that, being on that platform with that hashtag might affect the morale of the, the police officers within the team? And um, if you didn't, why not, didn't you? And if you did, um, think about the impact that might have on both the staff and public confidence. If you could just talk us through that, that thought process.
Thank you, Mr Matthews. Thank you, Chair. A lot to unpack there. I'll do my best. Um, first of all, I did not seek to disassociate myself completely. The point I was trying to make was that. Comments made by other members of the Reform UK Party. Um, did not impact on the police and crime plan. They do not impact on the work that I do as Police and Crime Commissioner. I'll take your point, the comments made by other members of a political party may uh, colour. Members of the public's view. The same is true for every political party. Um.
That, that's, that's my point is in fact actually that by, by implication then, that party's actions on what they say. Does impact on the way you deliver your plan.
Mr Matthews, please continue.
Thank you, Chair. Um, moving on to the point about uh, staff morale. It is not the job of a Police and Crime Commissioner, or indeed of any elected politician, to. Blindly support and enthusiastically endorse the work done by. Uh, those who work in the organisation to which they are elected. Uh, just a few days ago, the Police and Crime Commissioner for Thames Valley issued a very strongly worded statement. Uh, pointing out that in his view, the Thames Valley Police had entirely misjudged the situation. Um, and that he had summoned the Chief Constable to have a conversation about that. It is the job of a Police and Crime Commissioner to hold the Chief Constable to account. It is the job of a Police and Crime Commissioner. Uh, to trumpet the successes. Um, and I'm delighted to be able to take the opportunity to say. That maybe only a small thing, but the police staff canteen just recently scored 15 points out of 15. In an unannounced inspection. Um, and I have sent my congratulations to them through the Chief Constable already. Um, but if there are problems, they do need to be sorted out. Uh, and it may sometimes be not that there is a problem as clearly there was recently in Thames Valley.
So just a good point made by Milton Mafia, basically the police and the police commissioner and some MPs need to have thicker skin than what they've actually got. Instead of worrying about some of these posts that are being posted on social media about them or about other people. Uh, to learn to have a thicker skin, I've got very, very thick skin. People can call me anything they want. Uh, uh, whether it be personal, I'm not bothered. It doesn't particularly bother me. Now, whether that's because of my upbringing, I don't know. I don't know why I'm like that. I just am. Um, they need to be basically, we, we, we seems to have feelings, police. And these people, basically people being arrested for something somebody has said because somebody was offended. Is absolutely abhorrent and ridiculous. The recent one where two police officers, female police officers, visited a girl's house because of something that their daughter had looked up at online. Absolutely ridiculous. The police need to be out there policing the streets, catching criminals. Not worrying about what some, how somebody feels, whether it be alarmed, harassed, distressed. I've got ADHD and I've got autism spectrum disorder. Certain environments can trigger me. And when I say trigger, I mean into a meltdown. But I don't go around telling everybody I feel alarmed, harassed and distressed. And expect everybody in my town to change just for me. Do you know why? Because I'm not a twat.
It may just be that there needs to be a shift in emphasis. I'm sure everyone.
And that wasn't calling anybody else that either, before anybody starts making any comments and trying to take this out of context.
Here is aware, uh, that shoplifting has gone up a lot recently. Uh, that has resulted. Uh, in my asking the Chief Constable, uh, how they.
When you're sat there in Greggs and somebody just walks in, you've just paid £15 for three coffees to, you know, to. Steak bakes and a frigging sausage roll, someone walks in, helps themselves to everything and walks out. The staff aren't paid enough to stop these people. We had security. The staff aren't paid enough to stop these people. We had security in Milton. We've got more police in Milton. We've got the radios that have been coming into Milton as well. Shoplifting has actually fallen.
Dealing with it, what the responses are. I've had a report from the Chief Constable. He's very good. Um, a lot of very good work is now being done. And we are beginning to see, uh, shoplifting top off and, um, come down slightly, not as much as we would all like. So it is not my job to solely say how marvelous everybody is. When they are marvelous, I say so. But if there are things that could be done better, if there are things that could be improved, that is my job as well to make sure the improvements are made for the benefit of all the public.
Ellie, quickly, on this one, please.
Yeah, thank you. I do, I do agree that you are, you are there to challenge the police, but I still go back to the point that the top, top thing on the Association of PCC is ensuring community needs are met effectively, improving local relationships by building confidence and restoring trust. Now, if you look at that, that doesn't just go about building confidence and restoring trust in the public or the police, but it's also of the police in the policing system. And I can't see how you, by you saying that our towns and cities become apocalyptic wasteland of lawlessness is helping anyone, helping anyone at all restore any trust or any confidence in the system.
The problem is basically the reason that there is no confidence in the police with the public at the moment is because of the wokeness down at the, at the councils in Leicestershire County Council, in every council across the country that's led by Labour. The wokeness, the stupidness, the, the the sort of not wanting to realise reality and living in this bubble. There's no cohesive discourse. There's no, you know, sort of questions backwards and forwards. It just seems to be about slagging each other off all the time, playing party politics, instead of getting down to the nitty bloody gritty and getting problems solved, reaching some common ground. And this has been the problem for the last two to three years. And it is abhorrent. I mean, the nastiness I seen during the local elections was, I was shocked. It's actually made me and a lot of other people physically ill. Now, this has got to stop. We put these people into these seats and we expect them to do the job that they're being paid to do. Not to sit there backwards and forwards in slagging each other off, pointing out, you know, things, oh, you did this and you said that and I did this. And we don't give a shit about that. We're past that. They've all got to sit in that office and get on. They've all got to sit in that office and debate. And that is the big word is debate. Debate seems to have gone completely out the effing window. And it needs to change and it needs to change fast.
Thank you, Ellie. I don't think there's need to respond. Mr Bray.
Yes, it's following up from Ellie's comments about, um, your community work and, you know, I, I, I do pay tribute to you for going out and about in the community. I understand yesterday that you were at the Excellent Motor Show organised by Hinkley Bid. A few weeks ago, Reform asked if they could have a stand at that event and they were told no, because it wouldn't be appropriate as it was a non-political event. But they turned up anyway. They drove through the road closure order. The organisers asked them to leave, but they refused. Your new party spent the summer telling us that they were the party of law and order, the party of following the rules, the party of respect. How is this, set an example? How is this, how is this following the rules? Road closure orders put in by this council, this Reform-led council.
Why were you putting in road closure orders and would you have let any other party down there if it wasn't appropriate?
Well, are put in place for public safety. And how is it respectful to event organisers for them not to leave when asked?
Mr Matthews?
Um, I hope the panel will forgive me if I don't know the details of this individual incident. Um, however, I have got a meeting with the Chair of Hinkley Reform in about three weeks' time. So I'll, I'll raise it with them if that's all right. But, um, so I don't know the details of it.
Okay, thank you, Mr Matthews. I think, um, actually-
Very convenient.
See, because you've mentioned the, well, from Ellie's questions, um, you've mentioned the force in your relationship with them. Um, you keep using the phrase Chief Constable. He is officially the temporary Chief Constable. So I am very curious as to why you've not started the recruitment process for the replacement Chief Constable. You've had more than adequate time. Um, and did your decision to defect to a different political party have any bearing on the delay and the slowness?
Complaints I have about the current legislation is it takes no account of social class. And I've seen through my life-
So I'm going to end this video here, guys. Um, I've been on for around about half an hour to 45 minutes already. I'm going to watch the rest of it and do this as a two-parter. Um, yeah, you can basically see that he is a career politician. He's a, he wants to be mayor or rumored to want to be mayor of Leicestershire. And when this position of his goes, that will be his next step. Now, if people are aware of this and we've got a career politician in our midst, is that what we want? Is that who we would elect? So what I would say is call a by-election. Let's get somebody in that we actually agree with. It doesn't matter what party they lean to. Let's get somebody that's going to do the goddamn job of Police and Crime Commissioner and give the, the police the powers to actually arrest people, to actually go out looking for people and arresting them for crimes, for actual crimes. Not calling somebody a bugger on Facebook or, you know, telling somebody else, someone else has done something and having, having a game of Chinese whispers. We want proper policing in Leicestershire. This has been Street Switch for Cutography. If you like this video, please like and subscribe. Go and hit the notification bell. Please leave a comment. Give me a big thumbs up or a big thumbs down. Any disrespectful comments will just be deleted and not even read. Because I start reading some of these comments and they're just downright stupid. So I just delete them. I have got, I'm a big advocate for free speech. But also you've got to remember that I'm a big advocate for not having to listen to bullshit. This has been Street Switch for Cutography and I will see you in the next video. Bye for now.